Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting, June seventeenth at eleven AM. Uh please turn off your cell phones. And we will recite the pledge of allegiance or a moment of silence.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
One sec.
Oh, apologies.
Well, you've seen item number eight, the grant for the Sheriff's office.
Yeah.
We have to leave that community agenda.
Okay.
And then, um, do we need to state, uh, the two on the consent agenda for Big Language? Since we haven't heard back from them, uh, be any final review?
Well, no, we'll be adding it.
Okay, okay.
I'll move to the, to approve the agenda with item eight removed.
I'll second the motion. Take it to a vote.
Aye.
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 The agenda is approved. Uh, next we have community information items. Elsa, do you want to start?
Sure, I don't have anything this week.
Andy, you got any items from, uh, the UP?
No, I do not. There's a lot of bugs up here, um, and my truck, my truck is acting up, so that's all I got for yous.
Sounds like a precursor to maybe you're not coming back this summer. Well, I have one update. Uh, we went to the second quarter, uh, meeting for Freeport McRam yesterday. And the good news is Molly is up one point eight percent, nearing twenty-two dollars per pound. They have over five hundred employees, uh, at climax with still eleven openings. Uh, they have a hundred and twenty-eight contractors and they'd like to decrease that as they fill those eleven openings. So overall looking good up at the mine. If that's all for, for community information items, we'll move on to a reminder that all recordings are available. And work sessions are the recording available on the Lake County Government YouTube channel with transcription and indexed videos. The recordings can be watched at a time that's best for you, subscribe and stay informed on county decisions. Don't forget to hit that like button. That's not in there. Public comment is available for residents wishing to speak on an agenda item or another issue not on the agenda. To make a public comment, residents may request to speak by raising your hand in person, using the raise hand feature in Zoom and sending a message in chat. Jane, good morning.
Hi, I'm Jane Harrelson, one seventy-two Rapperty Drive. I've also sent an email because what I need to cover is going to take longer than three minutes. So the views I'm expressing are my own and not, uh, necessarily shared by others on the Cooper Hill Board, PB Swims, my family, friends, or other taxpayers. As a member of the Cooper Hill Board of Directors, I will not vote to sign the proposed amendment that the commissioners gave to the board on May twenty-eighth. Um, a board reflective of local demographics is unrealistic in conflicts with Cooper's non-discrimination policies. I've been on that board since twenty thirteen and when, we have a process for electing new board members. And I personally have a spreadsheet with the fiduciary duties and I put the people's name on there. I'm looking at their industry experience, their volunteer experience, what their skills are and what they can contribute to the board. I know the majority of board members are Caucasian boomers. I know you've been getting a lot of complaints about us being old and Caucasian apparently, but, um, that's what it is. And to change that board, I think it's unrealistic. Um, it could happen over time, but I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon. Also, the amendments regarding, uh, welcoming non-skiers, that already exists. If, um, any of you have had trouble going in to operate with your friends at Katie's or Christmas shop or, uh, ski uphill, please let me personally know. Um, that shouldn't be an issue. Also, in that amendment was, um, the request for tra- public transportation. Well, that is not Cooper's mission or its purpose, public transportation. Transparency and representation should be provided by the designated county board member, which is Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Lee, thank you. I appreciate you showing up to all the meetings. I appreciate you going to the extra meetings with the US Forest Service and I appreciate you conducting that, uh, community engagement work session back in May. You're representative of the people that elected you. So all those non-Caucasian boomers, they're counting on you. And they're counting on you as you're a mechanism of transparency. At every board meeting, you are briefed on the financials and operations. Um, another mechanism for transparency is our nine-nineties are publicly posted and we got an independent audit in twenty twenty-four. If that sanitation system fails, which we attempted to upgrade two seasons ago, but due to government permits, it has not happened, Cooper will shut down. And I don't think it's going to reopen. Um, if those lifts up the front side fail, Cooper will shut down. And I doubt it will reopen. The convention center has been closed for nine and a half years. The pool's been closed for four and a half years. And at last Tuesday's meeting, we all saw how expensive and hard it is to reopen something once it's closed. I look forward to working with this new board. I truly look forward to working with you. So if you have any questions or concerns, please come to me. You have my email, you have my phone number, you know where to find me. Thank you for serving.
Hey Jane, thanks for coming in. I mean, really, I think communication is the key. And calm, you know, communication, so, uh, we'll reach out to you, but I think that's
Thank you.
Part of the problem is the communication is.
Let's talk.
It's nice to have you in here. We haven't gotten to see you as part of Skip Cooper's board yet.
No, I, I work. I can't come to those work sessions, sorry.
And just to be clear, Jane, I don't think we're talking about skin color when we talk about diversity. I think more like, we're not talking about skin color. That, that should be cleared up right away. We're not talking about that. We're talking about maybe someone from the college and, and we don't know how that works. We know this, these difficulties go back to the previous board and maybe to that previous board. So we're still trying to figure it out too. So calm, clear communication and open dialogue is really what we need.
I appreciate you listening. I truly do.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
Anybody else have public comment? Okay, agenda item number one, calendar work session and regular, uh, meeting agenda review led by Sandra Pettis, Executive Administration Assistant.
Thank you. Go ahead and start with your calendar for next week. Starting next week, Monday, the twenty-third. Commissioner Tharp will be in her office from twelve to three. Lake County School District Board of Education work session from five thirty to eight. And, uh, there, I think this is still on, uh, planning commission meeting from four to six. Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, um, we were able to condense your work session. So the AM is canceled and we extended this by thirty minutes. So we only have the afternoon work session. We'll start at twelve-thirty to four.
Right now, there's a special meeting.
At ten, yes.
At ten, yes. And I do need to still add that on there, yes.
Okay, great.
Um, it was on a hold until yesterday, so.
Yeah, okay. Wait, can you go back then, please?
Yeah.
Then we still have a work session from twelve-thirty to four? So we, we got rid of the morning one and it's all in the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. And, um, we had nothing scheduled for the Wednesday work session, so that's been canceled as well. Um, so we have community coffee from eight-thirty to ten. And Commissioner Tharp will be in her office from one to four. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, just did the, my glasses, I can't see with my glasses. Uh, Thursday, the twenty-sixth, Commissioner Tharp will be in our office from ten to three. We have anything else scheduled that day? And the twenty-seventh, uh, what we've got on there so far is community coffee at Twin Lakes from nine to ten. Take a look at, um, the work session for next week. Um, you'll have a quick calendar review with me, uh, from twelve-thirty to twelve-forty. Uh, twenty-minute discussion with Amy from Tree Top Child Advocacy Center. Uh, one to one-thirty will be a discussion with Tracy from the Southern Colorado Economic Development District. One-thirty to two, um, Lake County Conservation District with Harmony. Two to three, uh, will be a review and presentation on CPW operations led by Sean Shepherd. And three to four will be, um, overview and discussion regarding the state of childcare in Lake County led by Lawrence Snyder, Deputy County Attorney.
Who knows?
Oh. My bad. City County man.
Cause.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, so that is your work session agenda. Um, we can take a quick look at the draft for July first, regular meeting. It is very small so far. Go ahead, uh, calendar work session, irregular meeting agenda review. Uh, communications update and review. With Sammy, discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-four, a resolution to adopt the Lake County Government Pet Policy led by Zoe. This, I believe, will still be on there, um, it's questionable. Discussion and consideration of an IGA between Lake County Government and the City of Leadville for the conduct and administration of the twenty-twenty-five coordinated election to be held November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, led by Tracy Lorenson. And discussion and consideration of a court wall agreement for the housing at ten thousand two hundred Pill Project led by Jackie Luthelhand, Housing Management Manager. And then we have, we'll have our normal stuff on the consent agenda, but so far, special events permit for Leadville Boot Days. That's what we've got so far.
Can we look at their special meeting?
Um, yeah, I don't know if that's posted yet. Like I said, that was on hold until yesterday. So I don't think we have it on here yet. No, we do not. So we'll have to add that today.
Okay, there are two, two things we were going to have a special meeting about. One of them is the courthouse. Is that?
That has not been scheduled yet, no. This is the executive session, uh.
Can we get one of, I thought we were doing it, I thought we were definitely doing it in June. So if we could get one, uh, on the bus, that'd be great. I've also stopped getting, um, invites to the Monday meetings. Are those still happening? For the courthouse conversation, the.
Uh, I haven't gotten them either. I think we missed because of.
So we're on a pause?
I think we're on a pause and I did, I thought we had that session scheduled because you were asking who should be on it and I thought you asked Elsa.
I did, I think. I thought I reached out to you. I can't remember where we were at with that. So I don't, I don't think we've actually kind of.
It said as long as Matt, as long as Matt is available.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to be able to have an open meetings law.
Right.
Conversation about it.
Okay.
Because we can't be in the same room.
I'll check my notes and get on that today.
Thank you.
Yes.
I feel like it's been a month since we've had one of those Monday meetings about the.
I haven't seen any on your calendar in a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last one I was invited to is May twelve.
No updates, no communication and still making payments on that, any.
I wonder if that's because we just released the RFP.
Oh, yeah.
For an architect of record, uh, last week on midnight. Um, so that would probably be the next big exciting.
Sure.
Anything.
Sure.
I do actually, that was part of why they decided to hold off is we were going to regroup and we were trying to fix.
Yeah.
The issue with.
Yeah.
Sorry. I, I do know that they had one scheduled and then they canceled it.
Okay.
Because I think you guys were bit gone to CCI.
Yep.
So I can reach out to them, but I would love to see if we can get this scheduled sooner rather than later so we could regroup before we meet with them.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all for me.
Thank you, Sandra.
You are welcome.
Thank you, Sandra.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sandra.
No, thank you, Sandra.
Item number three, informational update regarding current forecast, oh, excuse me. Item number two, communications update and review led by Sammy Shiner, Communications Manager.
Um, just a few quick things. Excel is doing a transmission, um, replacement project this summer. Um, so they will have helicopter activity, um, along ninety-one from Mountain Valley Estates up to, uh. This birdseye curve right here. This will be June or July and then, um, in August, they'll move to the east side. Um, they had it planned for August for flight for helicopter stuff on the fifteenth and sixteenth, but that's the race day. So they're going to reschedule. No problem. Um, here's their helicopter flight path map for the east side. So this pink, um, dotted line is the Monroe Belt, so it crosses right here. And the green and yellow is their flight path. So it crosses right here and then it crosses right in here. Um, so there will be like one to five Monday closures throughout the day while the helicopter goes over. Yeah, so the August dates are pending. Um, and then there'll be some helicopter activity on, in October as well for like three days. And here's a website to their, um, information about the project.
Can I, just the, I feel like the race days are when the fewest people are in town. So why are we not doing it on the race days?
They, they said that they asked the contractor to not fly on community event days because they have helicopters in there for the race. And they have, last year, there was a problem with, when all their drones.
Yeah, okay, got it.
So they gave all the community event days to the contractor. But there was some oversight, I guess, so.
Okay.
There is some tree removal going on in Twin Lakes this week, um, like a block north of town. So Helicorps is asking residents and visitors to give crew space and follow sign-in guidance. And then they will start a, the culvert replacement project on County Road five A, um, in July sixteen. And there will be no reroute. They'll just shut that road down since it's a loop. Then you guys wrote a letter to the community and that will be in Thursday's newspaper. Matt, your commissioner coroner will be in Thursday's paper as well. And then Andy, you missed your, um, your commissioner coroner last week, so. We're going to have to reschedule that.
Sorry, I will, I've got it written. Just let me know when you want it back and resubmitted.
Okay, we'll do it on off week.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, um, the, the mailer for the pro-school reorganization is going well. They're inputting the Spanish into the survey and then we can get the mailers printed and then it's a whole process with the, the post office, but the postmaster said that they look great, so. And then, um, we don't have to make, well, obviously we don't have to make this today, but do you guys, are you interested in another community event later in the year? Maybe in November for some budget?
Yeah.
Stuff, okay.
A community event for some budget stuff?
Well, the draft budget for next year is due in October and then the final is due in December. So we can have like a community input. And that can look like, you know, you guys can do like small, you know, bagels and coffee at the shop and have like a low-pressure conversation, whatever you want to do.
When we talked about doing like a community event a quarter as part of our community engagement and conversation priority? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I kind of like the fire, fire at the fire station.
Yeah. And, and specifically, so people can talk about budget? Okay, sure.
Provided for.
Yeah, that's great.
It's only off for you.
Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you, Sammy. Moving on. Informational update regarding current forecasted wildfire conditions for the twenty-five summer season led by Claire Hathaway, Office of Emergency Management Director.
So thank you all for having me today. Um, really, the overall purpose of this is that just to kind of come in front of you guys once a month, let you know what's going on, um, around Leadville, around the state of Colorado and nationally in terms of wildfire trends, um, and anything we just kind of want to be aware of. Um, due to packet kind of timelines, I write these memos about two weeks in advance. Um, but I want you guys to have a basis of what we're looking at at that screen point in time. Um, I think today is one of those times where we got a lot of new information in like the past three days. Um, so I'll go over the memo a little bit. Um, we're also kind of making some changes and updates and happy to answer any questions you may have. Um, so overall, um, this is probably the last time I'll kind of talk about snowpack. It's summer, we have a lot of runoff right now. Overall, the state is at twenty-three percent of median, uh, for our average snowpack. The Arkansas basin is at thirty-six percent. Um, yesterday, we received an email from Chris Nakarado, our Fire Management Officer with the Forest Service, um, for our area. Um, we, he did raise us from moderate fire danger to high fire danger. Um, so we are now in high fire danger. We've updated the OEM website, we made some social media posts. Um, and then Public Works and other partners will be changing the fire danger signs around town as they're able to get up there. Um, today is also a red flag day from ten AM to nine PM tonight. Um, and that is really all on the western slope. We're kind of actually the most like us and Chaffey are like the eastern counties of that. Um, and we're just going to see red flag conditions on the west side for a little bit. Um, they also had one yesterday as well. Um, the National Interagency Fire Center, um, has the preparedness level at two. Um, this is an increase from May. We were at one, so we've raised up to two. Um, basically this means that incidents may require national support, um, but resource capability remains stable enough that we can kind of source resources as needed. Um, in a previous email from Chris Nakarado, um, the Forest Service is asking for assistance in tracking unattended campfires. Um, so the link to that is in the memo and then Sammy has put it out on our social media as well. So it asks for the public's help, 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 help in reporting any unattended campfires they may come across. Um, Chris Nakarado also, uh, pointed out that the fire zone staff is whole in our area, so they were able to keep full staffing type capability this season. However, overall, we're seeing general declines in Forest Service staff, whether that's patrols. Um, so if the public does come across unattended campfires, the Forest Service is asking for help in putting them out if it's safe to do so. Um, so if you're out camping or hiking this summer, throw a bottle of water and a shovel in the back of your car. And if it's safe, you do so. Please help our Forest Service staff and put out any unattended campfires you may find. Um, looking at future forecast, um, the, um, sorry, I'm not trying to use the acronym of the National Interagency Fire Center. Their seven-day significant fire potential is showing, uh, moderate and low risk for the western half of the state. We're kind of in a warm, dry period right now, so that's going to kind of increase to moderate more steadily consistently throughout the state over the next few days. Uh, we are looking at a July monsoon. It'll be about a normal monsoon season for us. Um, we will have above-normal temperatures though this summer. Um, in terms of what's going on around Colorado, we haven't had any major fires thankfully. Um, Teller County, their Turkey Tax Shooting Range did catch on fire. This is about the third or fourth time. Um, so something for us to think about with our shooting range and messaging to our community out there using it. Um, there were some lightning strike fires in Eagle County. Um, many of you are familiar with the fire in Frisco, the Meadow Creek Fire right off of I seventy. Um, that was human caused. They're investigating that one. Um, and then Fremont County also had a fire as well that had limited evacuations. We are seeing some statewide fire activity. Um, our own engine six oh one from Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue went out to California with their crew of three. Um, so they'll be on deployment out there for two weeks. We're also seeing fire activity in New Mexico, Montana, Canada, Utah. Um, I would, I've looked at the smoke maps. It doesn't look like things should get too smoky here, um, but I would expect to see some smoke at some point coming in. Um, so our Lake County Public Health has some great resources for our community on smoke impacts for the summer. If anyone needs any N ninety-five masks or resources on that, they're always welcome to reach out to either OEM or Public Health.
Do you remember when people were like selling those for like eighty-five dollars? That was recently.
Yeah.
It's so wild to be like, yeah, if anybody needs any, like, they're for free.
Yeah, we have.
Because people were like trading their blood and more, you know?
That toilet paper.
Yeah.
Um, there are currently, in terms of fire restrictions, there are currently no federal fire restrictions on federal land in Colorado. Um, in terms of county, Custer and Albert County are still on stage one fire restrictions. Uh, Lincoln County has moved into stage two fire restrictions. Um, I also wanted to take this moment just to talk a little bit about Eagle County. Um, so Eagle County's fire, some of you may see as they, we move through these red flag days, they'll be talking about fire restrictions. How Eagle County handles their fire restrictions is that if there is a red flag day, they automatically bump up to a fire restriction level for the time period of the red flag. Um, so right now, there are, outside of red flag days, there are no fire restrictions in Eagle County. Since there is a red flag day today, they automatically go into stage one fire restrictions for the timeframe of that, um, red flag day, so ten AM to nine PM. Um, if they are in, already in a stage one fire restriction and a red flag day comes in, they will automatically go into stage two fire, uh, ban for that timeframe. So I just want to talk about that as you see that messaging come over, um, especially in those red flag days. Just know that they automatically go into that.
Why do they do it?
Um, it's just how they've decided to handle that. We talked about it here for a little bit. I've talked with their emergency manager. Um, it does cause some confusion, as you can imagine, especially since red flag days are only for a certain period of time. Um, but it seems to be working for them. Uh, they just have to go change signs a little bit more frequently. In terms of recommendations, um, I still currently have no recommendations for fire restrictions or bans. Uh, know that Sheriff, uh, Fire Chief and I are all in conversations about this. Um, we're kind of monitoring conditions right now, especially with. Um, we're kind of monitoring conditions right now, especially with the move into high fire danger, um, looking at kind of trends across the state of Colorado. Um, looking at this dry period coming up until we hit monsoon season. Definitely something to keep in the back of our minds that we may need to look at this, but right now, um, um, right now, nothing too much in that area. Um, looking at Chris Nakarado's emails specifically, um, there's a really great chart in there, um, so sorry, I just haven't figured it out, but he has kind of the, uh, criteria for fire restrictions.
Hmm.
Right now, we're only hitting one and that's our thousand-hour field moisture content is twelve percent or less. Um, so just for frame of reference, the sites the Forest Service is testing for that is at Lodge Pole Flats in Turquoise Lake. Lodge Pole is sitting at eight percent, Turquoise Lake is sitting at twelve, um, six to twelve percent is the criteria for high fire danger. Um, so we are meeting one restriction for that, um, fire, or sorry, one criteria for that fire restriction. Um, but right now, I don't have, um, a recommendation to move into fire restrictions.
Thank you.
That's kind of all I have, I know that's a lot of talking, I apologize, the memo timeline is always a little rocky, but I'm happy to answer any questions or expand on anything.
Claire, um, the next, yeah, busy rainy meeting, I believe, is July first, which will be, obviously, recorded July for celebration. Do you anticipate any type of recommendation for July for fireworks at that time?
Um, Chief Daly and I have been talking about the public show, um, if we move into stage one fire restrictions, that would limit our, what people can do privately.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think there's definitely some conversations to be had on that as we move closer, um, I know Chief Daly has expressed some concerns about fireworks, we'll be looking at that.
Okay, I just wanted to be on the focus where you are since July first is the next one.
Claire, I was chatting with the, some commissioners from Summit at the CCI conference. And they just invested in eight cameras that have AI technology for fire spotting.
Hmm.
And they said that the, those AI cameras are very inexpensive and catch fires far before a human does. Is that something that, that Lake County has looked into or considered or just what are, what are your thoughts on AI fire watch?
Um, those cameras are absolutely fantastic, we've seen a lot of demonstrated success, success with them, especially last summer.
Hmm.
Um, it's not done, done yet, I have been in conversations with Excel and Pano AI.
Mm-hmm.
So Excel is investing in a lot of these cameras to protect their infrastructure as well, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So they're looking to put one camera in Lake County. Um, I've been in conversation with that, it would be free cost to us, we wouldn't have to pay for it, I would have access to it, two or three other people would have access to it. And we would get the alerts if it does catch something, um, and they have huge radiuses, I'm talking like over twenty miles, um, so one camera could actually be like super beneficial for us. Um, they are looking to put it on an existing tower, um, the owner of that tower has some concerns, uh, that we're working through with, um, between Excel and them. So I told Excel and Pano AI, please reach out however I can support this work. So it is something in development for us for free, which would be exciting.
That'd be awesome, yeah, thanks.
On an Excel tower?
It's not an Excel tower, no.
Oh, it's a cellu- cellular tower? What kind, what tower are they looking to put it on?
It's a radio tower.
A radio tower.
Hey Claire. I had a couple of quick questions about, um, when we're throwing verbiage around like stage one and red flag, we all in the room know pretty well what all that means. But when we're getting asked by the community and constituents about where they can find out the definitions of all these and where's, where's the easiest place for them to be informed? Um, do we have an easy link up on our county website that we can direct them to? And are we able to track how many people are even paying attention to that?
Yeah, so on the OEM webpage, um, there's a subpage that's called Fire Danger and I can actually pull that up real quick.
Where's yours, Claire?
Yeah. Cool, um, so this is the OEM webpage, um, on the other side, we just have that fire danger and restriction. Um, there is a short URL for this, uh, that's just fire danger. So on here, there's a little infographic, we also have the current fire danger level, uh, with a definition as well, this is language that Sammy worked on with the Forest Service. It's also posted on the triangle side, sliding right outside the courthouse here.
In the firehouse.
In the firehouse, um. Are you talking about Station One?
Hmm.
Station One just has the link, does that?
Oh, yeah, next to this page.
Yeah. Um, so then on the side of the Station One Firehouse, there is a banner that links to this page as well, um, people can scan the QR code or type in the URL. Um, since today is a red flag day, you can also see I've included that information on there as well as kind of a brief definition. Um, just encouraging people, please avoid all open burning, including campfires, um, and then also being extra cautious with smoking. Um, they can have links if there's any, um, information, or I'm sorry, if we have any fire restrictions locally. Um, and then there's also links as well to the Forest Service map, uh, BLM, um, county restrictions. And then also at the bottom is a chart, stage one and stage two, um, this originally linked to a PDF, Sammy and I met yesterday to move this into accessibility guidelines. Um, but people can look by the activity and what's allowed in stage one and stage two on there.
Um, there's been four hundred and forty-four people on the website in the past month.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know what to stop the show. Anything else I can do for you?
No, thank you so much, Claire.
I don't know how to stop sharing. So, I'm just gonna pass it to number four.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you, Claire.
Next up on the agenda, item number four, discussion and consideration of file number twenty-five dash eleven. A conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit at eighteen seventeen Gold West Drive. In Leadville, led by Melissa Kendrick, Community Plan Development Deputy Director. Hello.
Good morning.
Yeah. Well, this is a, an application that was heard by the Planning Commission and you all on June ninth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it is an application to add an accessory dwelling unit to the, the property, the, the residential home that was identified. Um, so a conditional use permit is required in order to add the ADU, so that was the purpose of the application. Um, the Planning Commission made a favorable recommendation to you all with no conditions, um, it's pretty straightforward, it's a pretty simple application. And, um, it certainly met the criteria, which is why we made the favorable recommendation and then that was passed on by the Planning Commission to you all. So, um, I can add more information if you need that, otherwise, um, that's my presentation.
Shh, sweet.
Yeah.
I move to approve file number twenty-five dash eleven, a conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit at eighteen seventeen Gold West Drive.
I'll second that.
We'll take that to a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. File number twenty-five dash eleven passes unanimously. Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
Next up on the agenda, number five, discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-three. Resolution adopting Lake County Government Financial Policies Led by Candace Bryans, County Manager.
Um, so we came before you guys a couple of months ago, or maybe it was just one month ago, it feels like it's been, it's been a few months.
It was a couple of months, it was April.
Was it, okay.
Yeah.
So essentially, the feedback that you guys gave us from those policies, um, we applied those to this new set of policies, um. And honestly, I have to give a big thank you to Liz who re-formatted those with our, um, with our text and our logos and also helped clean them up. Um, and did a lot of work on a procedures document, so just to be really clear. Policies, that's what we're voting on, procedures can change as our systems change, but those are linked into this document, so you can click through those. So if the way Tyler works for accounts payable changes, we can change that piece.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I feel that this is one of the cleanest, clearest sets of financial policies that we've had. And, uh, our last round of financial policies, each policy was separate, so you had to cross-reference three different documents to figure out what on earth you were supposed to be doing. This puts them all in one place. It also gives us a very aversion history on that last page, so you can see when have we updated them, when were they updated in the past. Um, and also includes any resolutions, um, that we voted on, like the mine closure fund, it actually references, uh, and links in those resolutions. So you can see why some of these things were enacted and, and when they were set, so if we ever did want to change something, um, we could reference that and have a meaning to, to, to change if we needed to. Um, that's all I really have, we're done.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
There's a lot of work in there.
Yeah.
Just a question, did the, the, did the change get incorporated in?
Sure did, they had it on the press.
Did they do?
And we're really excited, because we don't want our policies changing every year that systems change.
Yeah.
We, we want the policies to stay the same, but if a system change happens, the process for how we do the work could change. But that really is a, a pretty significant change for our policies and really just having them all in one place, so you're not cross-refering, cross-referencing several different documents that may or may not be cohesive.
Yeah, I love it.
You did a good job.
I'm going to move to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-three. Resolution adopting Lake County Government Financial, Financial Policies.
I'll second that.
And we'll take it to a vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-three passes unanimously.
And we'll get those, as soon as we can get it, you know, recorded, we'll get, get those posted on the website, so people know what our new policies are.
Great.
You did it.
Thank you, guys.
Candace was working at this till like two in the morning, the week that you applied for the job that you currently hold.
Yes.
Right? Congratulations, that's some full circle stuff right there, well done.
The timing was off.
Yeah. And Liz, thank you so much for helping.
Liz did so much work, I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Liz.
I can recite these by memory if you want.
For a verbal process.
Hold on.
At the talent show, Boombeak Talent Show.
Oh, Boombeak Talent Show?
Yeah.
Pursue it.
Hyperlink.
Okay, next on the agenda, number six, discussion and consideration of a recommendation to engage in a purchase order with company X for a roofing project at six nineteen Elm Street in Leadville, led by Jackie Willahan, Housing Program Manager and Stuart Clark, Public Works Deputy Director.
So thank you, um, six nineteen Elm Street is a five-unit apartment house that was purchased by the county to preserve the affordable housing that currently exists. There was concern that an investor was going to purchase the property instead of, um, affordable housing, uh, then maybe convert it to something that might not be affordable. So we leveraged dollar funding to purchase it. Um, and when it was purchased, we had an inspection conducted, we knew that there were a lot of issues with it. And so this year, we have budgeted eighty thousand dollars for repairs, one of the repairs being the roof. And so we had five proposals and Stuart very kindly went through, um, all five proposals, there's a scoring matrix within your packet, um, to identify, um, who, who presented the best proposal. So this is a budgeted request, we did set aside the money, um, for this repair and anticipation of, of course, this year.
It looked like IMG was the one that came out on top, right? And that's also under budget, so that's fabulous.
So IMG's proposal does not include a complete tear off?
Hmm.
But I've been up on the roof twice and looked at, there's nothing coming up, so it would be a torch-down roof.
Hmm.
But the underlying roof is still good. Um, it's an interesting roof because it has a, a second roof attached with a slope over a false roof, or a original roof, sorry.
Hmm.
But I feel pretty confident in this, and then the next bid, a little bit more expensive, was the Yeti bid, they're from out of town. And the red flag that I have for them was that, um, their proposal had many mistakes. Um, they left things out, so I kind of wondered if that's the way that their job would run also. But I feel, we have the warm and fuzzies over the low bidder on this one.
Nice.
I've hired them through my, um, they haven't done it yet, but I can imagine.
Not quite in endorsement yet. I'll move to, um, engage in a purchase order with IMG for a roofing project at six nineteen Elm Street.
Second that.
We'll take it to a vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie and Stuart.
Tonight, are you going in front of city council to talk about the one, two, three?
Yeah, I talked to them the same day we talked, two weeks ago, and tonight's the night they're going to do it, so.
Yeah, awesome. Smooth sailing.
Stevie, we're, we're in the middle of pouring asphalt.
Yeah, thank you, Stuart.
Kelsey, she could be on her way here in just a minute.
Thanks, Stuart.
She's up next. I was supposed to text her about two items at the moment, and I'm driving in other stuff, so take a.
Take a break, yeah.
Sure, yeah, sure.
It's eleven forty-seven, we'll take a thirteen-minute break and be back here at twelve sharp. It's twelve o'clock and this meeting is resumed. And, uh, next item on the agenda, number seven, discussion and consideration of an IGA with the Upper Arkansas Ar- Area Council of Governments. Uh, for the nutrition program for the senior center led by Kelsey Maxi, our Public Health Director.
Hi.
Hi, Kelsey.
How's it go?
Great, lovely to see you.
You too. Um, this is a renewal of an IGA, they just do a new document every year. Um, so ultimately, the U-Cog runs the nutrition program out of the senior center and this is like a facility use agreement. As part of the funding, they have to pay us like some small fees for using the facility to run their program, so this is the agreement that just solidifies and lines that out. Um, happy to answer any questions.
No questions for me.
This is for me. I'm for you.
Um, and it's still, um, we did our legal review on it, we're just making sure they accept the very small changes that Chris and Melissa wanted to see, and as long as they do, then we should be okay.
Just untie those leftovers from last year's removal that we just needed to correct, so if you'd be more comfortable, you can also prove, I mean, I'm a little review, but I think it's, it's probably really ready to go.
I'll move to approve the intergovernmental IGA, intergovernmental, uh, I'll move to approve the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA, with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governance for the nutrition program for the senior center pending legal review.
Second that.
We'll take it to a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. IGA with the Area Council of Governments for their nutri- nutrition program for the senior center passes unanimously. Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Thanks for coming up here.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Okay, last on the list is, uh, well, do we need to say anything about, uh, number eight?
No, we took them.
Okay. Um, so the last thing on our agenda is the County Manager's Update led by Candace Bryans, our County Manager.
All right, if you're giving one minute, I've got a pull-up sheet.
Sorry, I accidentally closed my window. All right, so we've got a couple of different department updates here. Our assessor is working through the protest period. Um, a- as you guys know, and those had to be postmarked earlier than the ninth of June. Um, they, um, have maintained five FTE, but are currently, uh, looking for one more person due to the amount of work that needs to be done. Um, they have also received two responses to their RFE for the new camera system to replace Tyler, but due to the protest, um, plus, um, all of the items that come with that, and look, they're looking for experienced appraisers. They haven't had a time to figure out which system they will go with. I will say that I know that they, um, had a demo with Tyler, which has a different version of their software for assessors. A- and I had Justin from IT join them. Um, and I'm not sure if they will move that direction, but it does sound like that could be an improvement from what they're currently working with. Um, and I've also made sure that as the assessor moves forward, finding a software that they're involving IT so that we can be ready to assist them in implementation, which honestly, we've got a lot of systems that don't work. There has been a little bit of a lag of, people pick a system, IT's not involved.
Mm.
The person selling the product promises the world.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then you get into the process and you really do need someone on hand to help you implement. So really trying to make sure that as we pick new systems, IT's looped in and that departments have a support. So we're not paying for software that no one knows how to actually implement. Um, tourism and economic development, their website traffic is up ninety-three percent compared to last year. Uh, and they've updated their website. Uh, the new website, uh, is loaded with features and visuals that are being very well received. Um, also, uh, accessible. Um, and then their social media traffic is up thirty thousand percent for previous years, which, that's great. Uh, this is in large part due to collaboration with the Colorado Tourism Office and the partnership with Mission to Market, um, which has been working on their content calendar, um, with, with the direction from staff. Um, the Twin Lake Shuttle, which Adam was able to find, um, funds in his tourism budget to cover, uh, will begin on June seventh. Visited, visitors and residents can hop aboard a new three-weekend shuttle connection with the historic town of, of Leadville with the scenic village of Twin Lakes. Um, it will operate every Saturday and Sunday, nine AM to seven PM, June seventh through August thirty-first, providing a fun, stress-free way to explore, um, the Colorado Rockies. Um, public health, um, we have hired the new Deputy Director, uh, Elena Mederos, um, who was previously the Environment Programs Coordinator. They hosted the third annual Pride Wellness Festival at the Tabor Opera House from five to seven on the seventh, uh, which had twelve-plus, uh, community organizations in attendance with free onsite resources, including STI testing, peer support, immunizations, harm reduction, library DVD rep, support and resources and more. Um, they're hosting immunization clinics at the library during storytime weekly in July. Um, the senior center has been really busy this summer. It's a great time to get people out. So they've gone to four Rockies games, uh, and have excursions upcoming. Um, Pub Works, um, Michael and I are reviewing paving plan and will be working with Sandra to set up a time to come talk to you guys about, here's what we have in the budget, here's what you guys have asked for, where, what do we need to prioritize to make sure that we can cover the maximal amount of paving, given the budget constraints that we have? Or do, if there is something you really want to see done, does that require a supplemental from, from Pub Works to make sure we get that done? Um, so road and bridge, open county road four and nine around Turquoise Lake. Uh, they're patching, uh, what Michael calls never-ending potholes, creating roads in the southern end of the county. And then they are hauling equipment to the R and B yard from Skeet Cooper, and they'll work on getting that to auction soon. Uh, Hagerman Mosquito and Western Passes are still closed for now, uh, as we don't open those roads. Uh, but just letting you know, they're not quite open. The landfill, I know Michael had his inspection with CDP AT in the Air Pollution Control Division. Um, and he's supposed to be updating me on that this afternoon. They've got the air burner operational with training on the operations unit. Um, they've continued to have contamination illegal dumping in recycling drop sites. We're working on, uh, a plan related to that. Maintenance is putting away winter items and getting ready for summer. Uh, they're taking care of parks and working on sprinkler systems, um, continuing building repairs. And they got the air handler installed at the attic of the courthouse, and they're completing final checks to make sure that works well. Um, transit, uh, transit, they are still searching for ways to continue funding buses and operations. Um, we're researching different options for funding through CDOT. Um, thanks to funding from Climax, uh, Angel View at Twin Lakes in the Leadville Lake County Tourism Department. The buses that connect Twin Lakes and Leadville will operate this summer as we discussed before. HR, we just brought on Ashley Cole, who's an amazing new, uh, Resource and Risk Manager. Uh, and she started with us, um, I think it was last week. But she is doing such a great job. She and Zoe have been working on making our performance reviews, uh, digital so that they can be accessed multiple times throughout the year and updated as people are moving towards, um, their goals that they've had set, which we've never had a digital review. Um, they are also working on digital's feedback forms for staff to let us know how we're doing, to be continually asking questions about how are your department directors engaging with you? How am I doing as County Manager? How can I support you as a leader, uh, et cetera? And I'm really excited to get those launched as we start to talk about as a staff, what do, what do we want our culture to feel like? How do we want to see ourselves moving towards goals? Um, and, and really beefing up some of those items for our staff. Um, they are trying to send out the engagement survey to all staff by the end of June, and we've just refined the questions on that. Um, and a new comp plan, um, had, has been implemented for recreation. HR was really instrumental in doing that. They're reviewing a common plan for Public Works and helping Public Works work through that. Um, and then HR has taken over, uh, the majority of payroll responsibilities, not related to the actual pushing out of payroll. And that might not sound like a huge task, but it really is. We failed, uh, an ME for, uh, or didn't fail, we did, we had a failure in the ME for DHS related to the separation of duties for payroll. Um, and so we're separating those duties out, but HR has taken a huge lift in, in taking that on. So thank you to them, because I know they've been working hard on it.
That's awesome.
That's, um, um, last update from my office is that our Deputy County Managers last day will be the twenty-fifth. Uh, and we are working on refining and changing that doc, job description to meet the needs of the county. Uh, and we'll be recruiting for that position, um, over the next few weeks, getting interviews set up. I'm happy to announce this week I'm doing several Finance Director interviews and, and in the first rounds of finding the, the right person for a role, so. Until then, I have a little bit on my plate. And that's all I have.
Nice job, Candace.
One bite at a time.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for wearing all those different hats, Candace.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Candace, and so this concludes.
Nope, nope.
No, yeah, that was sent in.
You got it, you got it.
Oh.
Yeah.
What, what am I missing here?
Are we taking something off of the consent agenda? The big language solutions?
Uh, no, I think we just need to do, is it okay that we do some of the final legal reviews since they haven't finished their?
Uh, yeah, so the issue with them is that they are, they haven't registered with Secretary of State yet to do business in Colorado. So we've asked them to fill in that gap, so, you know, I'm sure we could, other than that, everything's ready to go.
That's why it's red? Okay. Show, okay. I'll move to approve the consent agenda on the condition that big language solutions be registered within the state of Colorado.
I will second that.
We'll take it to a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Yeah, we conclude. That concludes Tuesday, June seventeenth's regular meeting. Thank you all for coming.